So do you folks have any questions on how this is going to go? No? Okay.
I will guide us as we go along.
I will, yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna start this end and work our way down. And if you could just say, are you a Democrat? What neighborhood do you live in? How many doors you knocked on? And then we'll get to the first question, which is the one about what you do your first year of Seattle City Council. And Shannon's right there, so we'll go for it.
I am a Democrat, I'm a 34th District Democrat. And I've been one since well before I worked for Joe McDermott or decided to run for this seat, and I'm very proud of that. I live in the Avril neighborhood. And honestly, I don't know the count of doors. I've only worked on my neighborhood so far, but I imagine my campaign manager might have that list, so.
I'm Chaz Redman. I definitely am a Democrat, a very progressive one, I might add. And I've knocked on 600 doors so far in basically the central area of West Seattle. We'll change that soon. And I live at Gateway Hill, 39th and Lumberdale.
Great. So, yeah. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Herbl. I am a 15-year resident of Highland Park. I am a Democrat. I'm also a member of the 30th District Democrats. And I have knocked on roughly about 100 doors, three, four, six?
Maybe you could share that.
Whatever.
Yeah, so we don't count.
Hi, my name is Tom Kosch. I'm a lifelong Democrat, having grown up in Richard Nixon's home county and being the only avowed George McGarland supporter, which I'm very proud of. I live next to Hamilton viewpoint Park in the Avril area, and I've knocked on about 1,400 doors so far, including me, the people in the room.
And hi, I'm Philip Tavell. I am a Democrat, and I live in Morgan Junction. In the 17 years I've been in Seattle, pretty much just bounced between 98116 and 98136. At this point, I've door-bellied just under 100 doors.
Good evening, I'm Brianna Thomas. I've been a Democrat since I realized how much it bothered my father. I live in the Alaska Junction currently, but I've also lived in the Morgan Junction South Park in the Avril district. And I personally done right around 500 doors. My campaign's done about 1,500.
Great, thank you very much. I should also point out that we're gonna ask these questions, and at this point, we're going to give them a minute each to answer the question. So this is the equivalent of an opening statement. And at this point, I think we'll start with Brianna. And the question again is, what would you like to accomplish if you're elected in your first year on the Seattle City Council?
Thank you. And thank you all for having us.
And here is your timer.
Okay. Great. Thank you for having all of us this evening. It's interesting that there's just sort of not a stick. It's nice. Let's start getting to it. The first year, I think really I'd like to attack community policing. Property crime has gone up 9% in the last three or four years. Oh, sorry, 44%. 9% being car theft. And I think that coming out, running in the general budget to get policemen out of their cars and into our neighborhoods is the first place we really need to start. I was actually downtown today, and I spoke to a few police officers. There were five people giving one gentleman a fair violation ticket. And I asked three members of the SPD if it took five police officers to write one ticket, and they didn't really appreciate that that much. But I think it's a legitimate question. I think it's a legitimate concern, and we've got deep racing happening at South Park, and we've got five people running a whitey ticket downtown. Let's put policing where we need them, which is hurting for us.
Hi. In my first year, the most important thing for me is to start engaging more of the people in the community that we live in, to make sure that at least every month, and if not more, I'm out in West Seattle in South Park, meeting with people, finding out what are still the issues, what things need to be changed, and trying to get more people paying attention to their local government. After that, I think one of the big things is really looking at the municipal court system, and I think there's a lot of money that can be saved there and put back into mental health services and also substance abuse services. Something that goes hand in hand with that, like Brianna said, is the police. It's a public safety issue. It'll be dealing with the contract that's up with SPD, and making sure there are more feet on the ground, that there are more cops just walking the beat in our neighborhood, being part of our community, helping keep it safe. And on top of that, it's making sure that our transportation issues are taken care of, looking at the fact that West Seattle to downtown is not the only trip that people make. We want to be able to get anywhere in this city. The great education reformer of the 19th century, a prosperous man who once remarked, "Be ashamed to die before you create a victory for humankind." Thomas Jefferson stated that dissent is the highest form of political valor. I mention that because my love of politics and policy is informed by the sentiments of those quotes. And while, as my first objective, which will be the surprise to a few of you, would be to have the city finally do the right thing and have home builders pay impact fees on schools, parks, and roads, I don't think that constitutes exactly a victory for humankind as man intended. But I will use Jefferson's advice and offer a full-throated dissent throughout this process on that issue and every other issue where I see that we can make a positive change for the city that we hold so dear.
Similar to Tom's position, I would support in my first year, what I would attempt to accomplish, what I would accomplish in my first year, is not only the enactment of impact fees, which we are being already told that we can't do this year. And impact fees, so people understand, are developer fees that are assessed on not just residential properties, property development, but also commercial property development. And they're used for transportation needs, as well as open space in schools. I do believe that they should be focused on our transportation needs. And I don't think it's acceptable that we're being told at the same time that we're considering a property tax levy that we can't do it right now. Two administrations ago, when we had a bridging the gap levy, the proposal was for an integrated transportation revenue approach that included both, sorry, parking tax revenue as well as employee tax revenue. I think we're headed in that direction.
Thank you. My first year in office, I would stress working with SDOC to address some of the issues associated with transportation. There's an unbelievable number of options that SDOC has available with them. Part of it is a will, part of it is funding. I believe the mayor's $900 million levy needs to be tweaked for West Seattle. I would also continue, I think Chief O'Toole has done a great job. I would continue the community policing. I think that's an exceptional approach, especially in South Park and close to the incorporated line, White Center. And I would stress very seriously, we have a moral imperative issue associated with housing and the displacement of people who are elderly, and I would work to find some solution. I know there's plenty of solutions that are being looked at already through Paddle. And I would work seriously hard. I know there's a lot of people here who have been working to grow jobs. We have plenty of opportunities here in West Seattle. I would work to increase the number of jobs here in West Seattle. That was all a number of issues, including transportation and affordability.
Hi, so I do believe our biggest challenge in our district and in our city is certainly the massive amounts of growth that we are dealing with. So I would want to address our transit connections, our transportation issues, and building the relationships within our district and with the stakeholders, with municipalities around us and throughout the city of Seattle, both on the business side, the nonprofit side, different organizations, to come to the table so we can establish what those priorities are. I don't know all the answers. I don't know all of the questions even, and I want to get people at the table to be sure we can set those list of priorities. Housing affordability, I believe, is indeed one of our biggest challenges, again, related to growth, and I want to bring all of those stakeholders together to address that issue. And I'm very excited about the implementation of the universal pre-K, because I think opportunity and access for all of our residents is one of our most important priorities in government. And as your city council member, I want to see opportunity and access for all of our residents at all income levels, and to have them have the resources and support that they need to thrive within our district and our city.
Thank you all very much. That was really amazing. So I'd like to ask one more question, and then we'll do some paddle questions and answers. And this question, I think we'll start with Chaz, and go down and back to Shannon. And this question is, with the increasing personal property crime in our district, how would you strike a balance between public safety and police accountability?
That's a very good question. I'm a keen fan of body cams for police. I'm also a keen fan of bike patrol. I think Chief O'Toole has some ideas in her quiver, if you will, of ways to increase community policing. I think eyes on the street is a way to improve the local car thefts and break-ins in homes. And actually, that's one of the advantages of having people who have lived here a long time, the elderly, still being here a long time. The elderly provide those eyes on the street when everybody else is at work. So that's an issue associated with safety and affordability and senior. We've talked about ways to go in and work issues of nuisance houses. I think that needs to be a priority. I live in 20 of nuisance houses in Del Ridge, in White Center, in South Park. I would approach it from the point of view of working with the community, working with Chief O'Toole, working with the precinct. We have a great precinct here, Southwest Precinct is awesome. So I would go for nothing with the police department on that.
I do not think that more responsive policing and responsible policing are at all in conflict. The SCOTC President, Ron Smith, recently showed some amazing leadership when he told Seattle officers that if they can't police according to the values of this city, then they're welcome to go police in some other city. I, under, as mixed legislative aid, we led the city in adding the first new police positions when Nick chaired the Public Safety Committee, adding the first new police officer positions, new positions, since the 70s. We also strengthened police accountability at the same time. These things have to go hand in hand. As far as a new thing to do, I think it would be really helpful if we looked at restoring the very, very popular community service officers positions, of which there were several before the recession. And those officers, one thing that they can do, they're community service officers, but they're civilians. And how they can be helpful is they can relieve police officers of having to do some of the things and free them up to do more policing.
Public safety is the primary responsibility of any municipality. In our state, so no exception to that. We are currently operating under the 2012 Consent to Free Department of Justice. And while I agree with Chaz's observations about Chief O'Toole, I think she's had an excellent tone and has been a superb choice to date, let's not lose sight of the fact that the issues that brought forth the changes that we need are still with us. The tragedy that occurred yesterday in South Carolina, that you saw in today's paper, is yet another example of how the fundamental concept of equity and fairness is yet to be realized by our citizens around the nation. I applaud the fact that the city adopted a budget which calls for initial 25 officers per year in the next four years. But because of the fact the city has failed to act funds where otherwise could, our options are limited. We need to do the right thing by our city's budget and aggressively seek the funds that we're entitled to. I think achieving that balance between police accountability and making sure we actually have public safety is something that's relatively easy in the sense that it means that the city government has to work with the police and with the communities to do two basic things. One is to get the police going back to an ideal of protect and serve, that I think at this point we've gone too far to a degree to get towards to punish and enforce. And that needs to change. And it needs to change by the public's perception of the police, which can be improved by, again, putting more feet on the ground, having police in our neighborhoods, walking and talking and meeting people, so that they're part of the community that's helping. And that's a necessary element here. The fact is, we also have the SPD contract that's up, and there's a chance to put more accountability and teeth into that, so that when there are problems with other police aggro, and it can be fixed. But I think we need to work together, and I believe that they're gonna want to have those solutions, so that their public image is improved and our public safety is improved.
So about five years ago, I was driving a car on a Friday night through High Point, and Anne had stopped me and told me he wasn't going to let me drive down his street. He had decided it was his street. And he had three of his friends with him, and at the time, I was working at the Church Council of Greater Seattle and feeling particularly social working. So I got out of my car, because I was going reasonably this young. After a little bit of conversation, I told a joke, and the car keys left. And he realized he had lost the shift of power in that conversation, and he beat me up. And he beat me up, and I was unarmed, and I was by myself, and I was scared, and I got back in my car. And I called my friends, and I went to who I was seeing, I was going for wine and karaoke. I wanted to call the police, and I called my grandfather the next day, and he told me I had to. It was my responsibility to let the community know what was going on. I went to the precinct office, and they sent me back home. They told me to call 911, wait until a police officer could take my statement, four to seven hours later. None of you should be treated that way. You should be able to go to our police officers. If I deliver myself to your door, I think you should treat me with a little respect. And that should be the new culture of the police in Seattle.
Thank you. I think everyone here has made the point very well, that we need to strengthen our community policing. That does involve more police officers. It also involves more civilians potentially investing in security or providing education, and more of our neighborhoods actually being, really, the best safety work we can do is to know our neighbors and know our communities. And I do think districts are giving us an opportunity to build some of those relationships throughout the city. I would like to see, our Southwest Precinct, I think, is a great, great example of a really active police precinct that is involved in the community that we know, that we see. Having them out on bikes, getting more biking police, is, I believe, going to be very effective. And we have to address, I think addressing those issues will help us address the culture of racism that does exist within all of our communities and certainly within our police departments. And as we interact more with each other, if we can get folks from other communities to come into our community, other public safety folks, exchange our stories, share our experiences, that is how we can be effective at having good public safety and accountability for the police officers.
Thank you all very much. Those are really great answers. Appreciate it. So I want you all to pick up your paddles, so you can get familiar with them, so you know how they work. And I'd like you to show everybody that there's a yes, and there's a no, and there's a waffle. So if at any time you feel compelled to show a waffle, then we will ask you, we will give you 10 seconds, and only 10 seconds, to qualify your waffle. So that's really an important thing, and should make you think twice about raising that waffle, and knowing that you've only got 10 seconds. Okay, and it's really gonna have Chris on his feet now, so. All right, so here goes number one. Do you support homeless encampments in residential communities? Thank you. Will you vote for the $900 million transportation levy moved to Seattle? All right, Shannon, 10 seconds.
I presume I will, but I am interested in the community input and tweaking it, as Chaz put it, for our District 1 residents.
Chaz?
Yes, I'm especially concerned that the 9th affiliate does not have anything specific for West Seattle, so I would like to tweak it. I would probably vote for it, but yes, I want to tweak it.
Okay, Tom?
The current expenditure plan is nigh adequate for West Seattle, and the fact that the city is going forward without impact fees and furthering our subsidy of new development is unreasonable.
And who's left? Phil?
I do support replacing the bridging the gap levy. It's just not as that plan stands right now, do I support it?
Okay, thanks very much. All right, let's roll on here.
Oh, I'm a yes.
She was not a waffle. All right, number three. If you lived at North Highline, would you vote for annexation to Seattle? All right, thanks very much. Should we all get that? And Phil, you're the only waffle.
Yes, just, I would want to talk to the other residents there before deciding for them that I would vote for it.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Do you support mayoral appointment of school board members? Well, everybody's a big no, except for a waffle at the end here with Brianna. What's your beef?
I just think that there might be some value in having mayors move on some of these positions.
Okay, thank you. All right, here's another one. Should the miners', oops, should the miners' wetland be preserved? We got another waffle, but everybody's a yes. Brianna?
So I learned about this in the last forum, and my only concern is that there are folks that are currently campaigning in miners' wetland, and I wonder what we're gonna do to move them someplace else.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I think we'll go with two more. Do you support linkage fees to fund affordable housing and/or transit? Okay, we got two waffles, two yeses, and three yeses and a no. So Shannon and Tom. Shannon, go ahead.
I get much more excited about impact fees. I think they're more specific. I am interested in seeing the resolution implementation when it comes back, so I'm not a no on these fees necessarily, but I'm not completely doubtful.
Okay, Tom?
My only reason for waffling is that I don't want to imply that the current proposal's adequate. It's not. The concept's fine, but the numbers are too small.
Thanks very much. And the last paddle question we'll have here, until later. Do you support having bicyclists pay a registration fee for their bikes and have their license number visible at all times? Okay, thanks. So we'll go with Chaz, Lisa, and Brianna with the waffles.
So I lived in a city that had such a plan, Washington DC, and it was only partially effective. And so I would support it, but I think it needs to have much more vetting, and bicyclists in the city need a serious education on the impact.
I talked to somebody at the West Seattle Senior Forum who told me about a city that had it was very small, it was $5, and it had a benefit for bicyclists in that the license was able to sign that they were still on bikes, so it depends.
Tom? Oh, wait, there's one more waffle. Sorry, I'm getting mixed up on the waffles.
My social justice ticket a little bit later, I just wanted to make sure that we've got a low-income option.
All right, thanks very much. Appreciate it. I think the last question, we started with Chaz, so now I think we'll start with Lisa. Okay, there's the one everybody's wanting to know about. Everyone agrees that transportation into and out of the district is getting worse all the time. How's your background and expertise prepare you to make a difference for us?
I worked on pedestrian master plan, the first pedestrian master plan that the city created, and also worked for, it took four years, to get a dedicated revenue source from the counter enforcement program to fund safe routes to school. And since that, that was, that happened two years ago, and there are several dozen millions of dollars that have gone into school, traffic, pedestrian traffic improvements that have benefited both pedestrians and bicyclists.
Early in my career, I had the responsibility of bringing together a consensus plan that is adopted by the voters, to increase the sales tax the county was working in about one-half cent, to fund $1 billion of transportation improvements, including rail extensions, bus services, as well as a tunnel that actually works, if it's possible. I mention that because the county I worked in was very diverse, as is our city, and I have an expertise in building coalitions to find ways to work together to build better financing structures. In terms of funding for the transportation that we need, obviously, we need to impose the impact fees that the city has refused to impose for 25 years, let's just jump in, 25 years, which they're continuing to shirk their responsibility on. Further, I would not continue to exacerbate the problem with our current parking practices and housing policies in West Seattle. Well, my background is a business owner, and as an entrepreneur, and also as an attorney, and most importantly, as a public defender, the two things that have always struck me is efficiency and fairness, that those two things are very important, and I think in some ways, they're kind of missing from our transportation system right now. That, as I stated before, we need to look at getting around to the entire city, that it's not just getting downtown Seattle, that it's the ability to go from Alki Beach to the University District, that it's the ability to go from South Park to Fremont, or to try to go to Kent if you're working outside of the city. And what I've done in the past is I've been in the situation where it's about follow-through, it's about management and oversight, and to be honest, those are things that are missing right now in a lot of our large civic projects, and it's missing from the city council right now. The ability not just to go from a photo op, you know, moment where we want to solve a simple problem, but to fix the problem and make sure it's fixed for good.
I think you said the most useful thing in my background so far is the coalition work. I've worked in coalition against him, I'm in all 1185, I worked in coalition on the extra C-TAC for our minimum wage, I work in coalition now on the portable housing crisis in our city. I am not the transit, the transportation expert on this panel, but I am the expert at getting things done in a timely manner. These are the things I've got to do in the last five years. And with the help of experts that we have at the Capitol, the people who know who they're talking about, I'm pretty sure you put me in a room and fight for, you know, a shingle at the end, and I'm happy to stay in there until you actually have a solution that we can implement in a reasonable amount of time.
Transportation is a regional issue in all of its forms. And in my work at the King County Council for Councilwoman Joe McDermott for nearly five years now, he's been chair of the Budget Committee and served on the Transportation Committee. And we have started a work on low-income fare, which our council is very proud of. We're working on the expansion of Sound Transit 3, worked to have Prop 1 be implemented. And we have had to look at the dollars for Metro, the dollars for our roads, all of the safety issues involved in these transportation issues, and working with lots of other municipalities. Unfortunately, Joe can't just walk in and say, okay, these are my priorities, and this is what I want to get done, and these are my values, and it's the most important thing. We have to build those relationships, build those coalitions. I've worked with folks at Sound Transit at the state, I had experience at the federal and state level myself, and I could bring those working relationships and my experience to this role of the city council.
Thank you. That's actually one of the areas of my best expertise. I've been on pedestrian master plan, transit master plan, rapid light C plan, bike master plan. I was one of the members of the Seattle Long Rail Project in the early days. Worked for Flex Car, which, as you recall, was a very social-oriented organization. I had been in local Sustainable West Seattle, I was a transportation guy, and so for years before there was West Seattle Transportation Coalition, Sustainable West Seattle, we used the whole transportation seminars in the fall, where we brought people together to talk about the transit issues. So my background locally is deep in transportation. I provided for the community source for the walking apps in the kiosks in West Seattle, and did the same thing in Northeast Seattle through Feet First. I worked with Feet First on safe routes to school. So there's almost nothing about transportation that I don't know personally, and I can tell you that I probably walk 85% of the peninsula. There's many neighborhoods I haven't seen personally, but don't worry, I'll get there.
Thank you all very much. Now I'd like to ask this question. Small business owners may be feeling priced out by the development in our business districts. What could be done to maintain a thriving, small-business community, neighborhood character, and giving the customer what they want?
Well, I'm a small-business owner. I have been in the last four years, and I'm pleased to have that background. The situation at the Alaska Junction right now, which perhaps is part of Marson's question, is not working out very well. The housing policies of our city have chosen to allow development to occur without adequate parking. Parking is fundamental to a well-functioning business district. And so down to the theory that if we don't have parking in apartments, that people won't have cars, what we've actually accomplished is a battle, a triage, struggle for parking on the street. Talking to the merchants as I have, they're very frustrated with the situation that's occurring. It's also true that King County has chosen to reassess the free parking that It's also true that King County has chosen to reassess the free parking that is behind Arts West and Husky Deli, from $6 a square foot to $85 a square foot, which may very well compel a change in our free parking situation. That's also not healthy for our local retail economy. I think the biggest thing that could be done is to make sure that the city council has a voice that's from West Seattle, that knows the business owners here, and that talks to them all the time, that spends time with them, because the truth is, we are having problems right now, and one of the things is it feels as though we're having a certain development shoved down our throat by people who are making the decision that aren't part of West Seattle, that don't understand the specific issues we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. And the fact that certain small local businesses, even though they're successful, aren't being even given the opportunity to move into some of the new larger buildings, say in the Alaska Junction, is a huge problem. So this is working with the Chamber of Commerce, working with the local business owners, talking to the patrons, and making sure that we actually understand what we want as a community, what we need, and that the person who's representing us in Seattle for the council is going to stand up to the last minute to make sure we keep our neighborhood the way we want it.
I think part of what we do is when we have new folks move into West Seattle, because they're coming, you know, whether they come with their cars or without their cars, or on their bikes, or on the bus, or on the bike road, we're all going to bike over that Sound Transit 3, new folks are coming. And I think that the best thing we can do is try to welcome them into the community and have them appreciate the value of the character of West Seattle. There's a reason they're moving here and not moving to Capitol Hill, there's a reason they're moving here and not moving to Magnolia. So I think that, I mean, when you come to 34th District, everybody's a name tag, and if you've seen somebody, you just stick your hand out and you say hello, because that's how we are here in West Seattle. So instead of assuming that everyone who's coming in is not going to be supportive of small business, I think that we should assume the opposite, that they are going to be, and that's why they're moving here, and that's why they're moving to our neighborhood, because it's great. So I think, so just a little bit of basic outreach to folks that are moving in, so they feel welcome. Some of the newer folks I've talked to, they're just like, oh, West Seattle, like, they don't like the world moving in, and just like, well, let's just start a little friendlier.
To expand a little on Brianna's thinking, I agree, again, growth is our biggest challenge and our biggest opportunity. And I think this is one of those places where district elections can be a real positive for our community in the sense that we can look at existing agencies in the city, like the Office of Economic Development, Department of Neighborhoods, we could see how perhaps they can coalesce some of their skills, we can build some stakeholder groups with our community, so that we can get together and have people, have our businesses, all of our businesses, our small businesses, our larger businesses in our community, get together to talk about the most effective ways that our city can help to make them successful. And I believe that having the district representative there will encourage that, because not all of our neighborhoods have the same character, not all of our neighborhoods want the same kinds of growth or the same facades, and I do believe that bringing those stakeholders together, changing the way we work with these agencies and our city council can be very effective.
Thank you. The biggest question there is the cost of the space. The overbuilding space is cheaper, the overbuilding space is Class A. So one of the things that we could do on city council is that we work with DPD to make sure that redevelopment includes smaller spaces. What makes West Seattle unique, particularly the junction, is deep, narrow spaces. Those are not being designed anymore, so one of the things that we can do is we can work with DPD, you know, City Economic Development, to encourage that. We have some opportunities, and West Seattle Chamber is a very powerful organization, they have worked with DPD for many years, there's no reason to believe that a DPD, city council, West Seattle Chamber, and stakeholder with business owners who are not part of the Chamber could produce a solution. We've seen that with the new structure right across from Easy Street. The local vendor's going to be a Chipotle, and I think that's horrible, but it's too big a space for, actually, I don't think it was there before, it's super supplements. But we need smaller spaces, and I would work to get that.
Business districts that work are really important, and they take, it's a combination of both good transportation policy, a multimodal system that encourages both bus transportation, continued support of better walkable neighborhoods, and also the ability to drive to make some of your trips. And I really support the citywide review of the current parking policies. I don't think DPD should be in the business of making parking policy for the city, I think that is something that should be reserved to policymakers, to city council. And I also think that things like looking at pedestrian zones are really helpful, because they require retail space on the ground level, so that can help enlighten districts, rather than they just waiting for sort of the space to go the highest bidder.
Thank you all very much. Let's, first of all, I want to check, are you guys warm? Do you need some warm water? I know, I notice they're all kind of drained. So let's see if we can get you guys some warm water, and we'll move on to some more paddle questions, okay? Okay, well, you know, let's take a stop, then we'll go with one more question, and then we'll do the paddle questions after we're done with the water. Does anybody else need some more water? Okay, alright, that's what I figured, okay. Is that a diet?
Where do you want it?
Thank you so much.
Okay, Tom?
Oh, you don't have one?
So the question I'd like to ask, since we're talking about water. Have you planned to improve the health and quality of life in our district? And I think it's time to start with Phil.
Well, I definitely support bringing some form of 24/7 medical care to West Seattle. There's definitely an issue here with that, that's a part of it. You know, it was brought up, actually, at one of the other forums, one of the real health issues that we're not addressing in general is poverty, is what happens with that. You know, we have a food desert in the Delridge area that exemplifies that problem, that we have a real disparity between the haves and have-nots in our community. And I think addressing that is a big part, bringing jobs to West Seattle, making sure there are more services in general, that people who are new to the country, to the area, actually have a way to go out and look, you know, to the community centers and to other avenues to find out what's available for them. We need to look at prevention in general, but I think we just need to look at our neighborhood in more holistic fashion and see how we can help everybody, and not just look at one or two projects.
I'd like to get projo bags on California and along Delridge. Not only would that help with the low-income, the general, the same with cars, but it's also just to feel good physical activity, and we've got the terrain for, along some bike lanes down there, so if you go.
In regards to a food desert, that's come up before, the Department of Economic Development apparently told West Seattle that it's not viable to have a big box store, grocery store coming into the food desert neighborhoods that we've got right now, especially along 35 and down towards South Park. They didn't have really any solutions on what we could invest in to fix that? I know there's a co-op along Delridge that has been doing its darndest to get people invested in to get that off the ground. My understanding is the Department of Economic Development hasn't had much of a hand in supporting that project, so maybe we could have them strike there. Same thing with Department of Neighborhoods, getting them engaged on that project. And then, I think another thing we have to take a look at is, you know, what we're doing without moving industrial bike lanes through South Park, and I say that all the time, they can't breathe down any of those.
I, too, would actually like to see the city be more actively involved in helping to encourage the Delridge co-op in our food desert. I think that would be a big issue for the Delridge community and the food desert is really unacceptable. And then also increasing opportunity access to equity and fighting poverty that way. If we don't have a grocery store in the neighborhood, well, people sure better be able to get on a bus, or ride their bike, or walk somewhere nearby to get access to healthy foods. Cleanup of the Duamish, the county, the city, all, prior to, they've all been working together to try to work on Duamish cleanup. I think for our community, that cleanup is vital and very important, and anything that encourages open spaces and walkability, I think improves the health of our communities. It's one of the many reasons I love living here. So I would also like to see the city more involved in educating folks about different ways they can be active biking, walking, and encouraging that kind of activity.
Thank you, I agree, I think the Duamish is very important. I also believe that community policing will help with the small things, and basically improving biking is tending to the small things, the detail. The city could support the Delridge grocery co-op, there's no reason why we shouldn't, there's plenty of opportunity, plenty of funds available that are supporting other community activities. Transit, if you live in Highland Park, you know transit disappears on the weekend, the college does not close classes on Saturday, so getting transit throughout the neighborhood is an important component. And also drainage, if you look through West Seattle, the most important drainage, Highland Park, it's the washing water in the winter time. If you try and go to the food, folks at the farmer's market on Sunday in the junction, if it's raining, you know you have to basically have waiters on. So drainage, and little, simple things like that will improve life here.
Well, first off, because of the water tip, I would say expedite cleanup of the Duamish. Secondly, I would say that a couple years ago, the city council, under Councilwoman Carter's leadership, passed a pay sick and safely ordinance. I think we need to be doing much, much more to see that that ordinance is enforced. In 2011, when this passed, there were 190,000 workers in this city who did not have any pay sick and safely. Three days off sick is about a week's worth of groceries for a family. Going to work sick, or your children going to work sick, expedites the municipal disease being passed. So I think those are really important things, and then the other thing also is rental housing inspection, made for safe housing for renters, also half of the Seattle population.
During his brief time with us as a candidate, Dave Montour should be commended for bringing up the importance of a 24/7 hospital facility in our community, and I appreciate his effort on that issue. The city has failed from a planning standpoint to deal with transportation and affordable housing, and there's precious little more work to someone's health than having a roof over their head in terms of dealing with climate, et cetera. And unfortunately, the city has once again failed to meet its obligations. Recently, we heard that the city has chosen to change its point of view and back pedal on the environmental view necessary for dealing with the linkage fee, further delaying something that should have been done years ago. I know something about the subject, because I've built 3,000 units of affordable housing without public subsidy in my work, and also because of my friend Chaz and Amanda's suggestion, a proud member of the Delridge co-op, and otherwise echo the excellent comments of my colleagues.
I want to make sure that's, I've got everybody. Yeah, as a matter of fact, if you're not a member of the Delridge co-op, please do join them, we really need them to be a vibrant organization down in the valley, so, thank you. Yay, don't. Okay. So, you know, I think we'll go on to some more paddle questions. And the first one is, would you support a hospital being built in West Seattle? Okay, we've got one waffle, Shannon?
Well, I certainly support the concept, but I would have to see how that works, the funding of it, I would want to know more about.
Yes, okay, thank you. Would you support Seattle requiring developers to pay a user fee? I think it's a bit of a small tax that they would pay to the city in order to build. It's not a locket sheet, think of it as a sales tax, or an excise tax, we won't. Well, everybody's got a waffle there. Stan Haris, are you here? This is your question, isn't it? It's not? Somebody told me it was an architect, I assumed it was you. Alright, thank you. Oh, Chris's fault, yeah, thank you. Alright, well, we'll just pass on that one, since everybody seems a bit confused anyway, so. Alright, the next one is, would you support creating a public internet utility similar to City Light? Okay, we've got one waffle and a resounding yes, so Lisa?
I'd have to look at the cost, which I know is a hefty price tag, and I'll look at the other priorities.
Okay, thanks. Will you work to implement mandatory inclusionary zoning? Okay, it's a hard one to answer, apparently. Okay, Tom and then Shannon, because you're the waffle folks?
I certainly support inclusionary zoning in terms of meeting our affordability needs, but it needs to be placed in locations proximate to job centers, which is not the case in much of the choices that the city's taking right now.
Yes, and to be frank, I would need to know more about the specific zoning issues around inclusionary zoning, I reported it as a concept, definitely, but I'm not.
Let's make sure we bring the microphone back and forth when we need to, so just, I know Shannon, you're kind of not getting it there quite sometimes. Okay, so another one, how about, do you oppose the elephants at Woodland Park Zoo being sent to another zoo? Okay, so we've got three that oppose, one that doesn't oppose, and two waffles, that would be Lisa and Brianna.
I think it's a bad decision, I don't think we have the kind of contract with the zoo that allows us to stop it.
So is that a no or a waffle?
That's a waffle.
You sound like a no.
I personally oppose it, but I don't think as a city council member, given the current contract, there's anything to be done.
Alright, thank you. Brianna?
This is going to be popular, but I just don't have strong feelings about these other effects, you guys. I just don't.
Alright, do you support a third sports facility being built in Soto? Can you show me your signs, Eric? Okay, yes, two yeses and two waffles, Lisa and Phil. Let's start with Phil.
I definitely support bringing basketball and bringing NHL to Seattle, but not necessarily with the only option being in the Soto area.
Thank you, Lisa?
I'm supportive of a multi-use facility, so as long as what goes in is still a multi-use facility, not a single-use facility, I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Are you a member of your neighborhood association or community council? Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Do you support building apartments or condos in the district that do not have off-street parking?
Just to be sure, we need clarification. Just read that one.
What, okay, I'll read this one, I'm sorry. Do you support building apartments or condos in the district that do not have off-street parking? Oh, it's like a waffle house in here, okay. Alright, this is going to go right down the line, let's start with Brianna, and just come this way.
It depends where in the district. Where in the district? The district isn't the same all over, right? Like each little hut is a little bit different, and has different needs and different spaces and different stuff.
Okay, next.
For me, it really depends on the location and the plan, how they're going to deal with parking.
Next, Lisa?
Depends on where it is.
Okay, can you pass that over to Shannon?
Yeah, I think we're all going to be grieving on that, and if there's super transportation available, yes, I agree, if there isn't, no, I don't.
And Shannon?
I would, those guys, and plus, I think it matters what the context is, you know, are there two others next door that do have off-street parking, or do have parking available? You know, so I'd want to see it in the bigger picture.
Okay, thank you. And here's our last paddle question of the evening. Do you think the next generation will be able to fish and swim in the Duamish? Okay, everybody's a yes, and we've got one waffle, so Brianna, one more time.
I mean, I hope so. I don't think for sure, nothing guaranteed unless we stay on track with the cleanup efforts.
Okay, thanks. Alright, let me check my clock. Do I have any candidates? Do I have any candidates or King County accessory in the house? There's one? Okay, so we're still waiting for one more to show up. Okay, thanks. Here's another question, I'm not sure it's the last one. With the competing needs of so many district, excuse me, does it compete? With the competing needs of so many distinct communities, how can you address these needs without one neighborhood or the other feeling overlooked? And let's begin with Brianna, okay?
So the great thing about the districts so far, other than the abundance of talent and willingness to serve across the city, is I think that everyone who's up here understands that we for a while have needed neighborhood-specific recommendations and representation, but not a secret enmity of NACU. The city is still very much hard to get connected to each other, and I don't think anyone up here wants to go West Seattle versus the rest of the city. We still want to be good neighbors to Northgate, we still want to be good neighbors to Beacon Hill, we'd like to be able to get to Beacon Hill a little bit quicker, but I don't think that's, I hope that that's not going to be something that as a result of districts, we have contention between them. I hope we work together a little bit better, actually, to just be able to focus on each district needs and kind of connect to the whole.
I will echo what Brianna said, and also I will say that in my current role as staff at the King County Council, the staff members and the elected officials at the county council are working with a very diverse group of individuals who come from very different communities. You have rural communities, cities, it's much like different neighborhoods. And we always, day in and day out, what we are doing is building relationships, working together, finding our common ground, figuring out where to push and where to pull so we can get things done all together. And frankly, most of the votes we have in the council tend to be almost unanimous, and that's a result of having effective working relationships, stakeholder and coalition building, and that's something I'm very good at, and I would really look forward to working with the city council on those kinds of issues.
Thank you. I too believe that cooperation and collaboration are the keys here, and I have a 12-year history of workings and very difficult issues in West Seattle, and finding compromise. And I also have the same experience in other parts of the city on transportation issues and community development issues. So I don't think it's going to be an issue. Clearly, we voted for district elections because we want a little more focus on the district itself, the areas that we live in, but I think all of us have, the reason why West Seattle's so great is because it's part of a better whole. I can go to Green Lake, and I walk around Green Lake, Green Lake people can come to Alki, and walk around Alki. One of my biggest concerns is that we have lost that access. It used to take, what, 20 minutes? It's Green Lake, now it takes an hour. So to some degree, what we've been doing is we've been separating neighborhoods from citizens who live there. My goal would be to, A, improve the transportation network so that we actually can communicate with each other, and then work to reconnect the city. One of the things I really loved about the Monroe project was it was connecting neighborhoods, and I definitely want to connect neighborhoods.
The essence of politics is working with diverse communities. So if you're doing it right, you're bringing everybody to the table, and you're giving everybody a voice, and I do agree that district elections is a vehicle for that. As a person who has a background as a community organizer, I'm committed to the value of transparent and inclusive leadership. And two examples where I think I can say that we did a really good job with two different groups on the other side of the table, where it was business and workers advocates on paid sick leave, we ended up having an ordinance that businesses support, including our own Molly Moon, so there were like rental housing inspection, where landlords and tenants came together with something that they could live with.
In my nearly 30 years working in land use, I have generally worked with organizations, jurisdictions that are done by district, in very diverse communities. And the work I've done has been trying to build coalitions across different demographic and economic interests. I supported the district concept when we voted on it two years ago, because fundamentally, the power structure of our city has not been reflective of the interests of this community. I've been walking actively, and will continue to do so, because the beauty of having a district election is that it allows the real power to resonate with the people of the community. One-on-one communications work very well. I believe that we can do very well if we respect each other, understand each other's point of view, and I'm not interested in being your council member and being one vote out of nine. We have to put together coalitions, I have a history of doing it throughout my career, am optimistic this new structure will serve as well.
Well, I think answering that is really on two levels. On the first level, it's understanding all the different disparate neighborhoods within just West Seattle and South Park, and the big part there is being in those districts. As the council member for West Seattle and South Park, it's meeting with the people that live there, that go to school there, that work there, that come from time to time, and it's knowing Alki as much as Admiral, as much as Del Ridge, as much as South Park, and it's being out there and talking to people, because as the representative for a community, you have to know what the community wants. And then there's the second level, there's working with the other council members and the mayor's office on issues that are citywide. And that takes visiting the other districts as well, and talking to the council members, and making sure that it's about the success of Seattle, that if Seattle succeeds, everyone succeeds. And I think the key is making sure that no voice is overlooked, and to be in public service means just that, listening to the public and serving it.
Thank you all very much. I think that's going to be the end of the questions, but I would like to give you each an opportunity for a little wrap-up. So why don't we do, say, 30 seconds? And, okay, I'll give it a minute, all right. So Brianna, are you the last one to start? Okay, and I'll go to Shannon Braddock, and we'll do this. Thank you all very much, I just wanted to know, I really appreciate you being here. I'd like to thank all of you for being here. How many people here are here for the first time? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Yes, thanks everybody for taking the time to come here tonight and learn about the candidates. And I will point out that one of the people who's here for the first time is my 15-year-old son, Hayden, and that is one of the reasons I am really excited to run for this District One council seat. I care a lot about this community, I'm deeply rooted in this community, I'm raising my three kids here, they all go to Seattle Public Schools, I've been involved in organizations in this community, like Westside Baby, West Seattle Food Bank, White Center Food Bank, my Lafayette PTA. I really, really love my work, frankly, working at the King County Council for Councilmember Joel McDermott, and it has shown me how important that experience of that coalition building, knowing how work with other municipalities not isolate, even though we're in this great new district system. And I believe that that experience and bringing that to the table will be very effective for all of you here and throughout our district, and I would really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I've spent 12 years in West Seattle, and in that time, I've helped create Sustainable Seattle, the Tool Library, Wayfinding Maps, I've helped finish out the Monville Creek Trail, the kiosks, I've been the principal behind three music festivals that are now up and running. I was on the camp lawn advisory council when we rehabbed and rebuilt the lodge and made things a whole lot better. Partnered with NPS and 4A for a challenge course. I've been on parks, Morgan is very lucky, we've had lots of parks activities, so I've worked with parks for basically the last 12 years, Olympic Beach, Extension, which is now Socials Park, Morgan Park, et cetera. The sustainable world, we started a Green Life Festival, and we need to cooperate with the West Seattle Drug Trade Association, so we have now integrated sustainability into the Summers Fest. I've been on Morgan Council, Southwest District City District Council, I was chair for three years in a row. So imagine what I can do for you on city council if I've done all that as a volunteer.
I'm committed to this community, I've lived here for 15 years, I have two grandchildren here, my commitment will continue, I really love the work I do for the city, not just for West Seattle and South Park, but I have a long history doing work for both the city and the community, because we had the opportunity to be the chair of different committees that have had oversight of several different departments in the city. In our first four years, we had oversight of the levees for all, sorry, the libraries for all levy, which led to the building of, building renovation or expansion of four libraries in District One, community centers levy, the parks levy, we also worked on adding police to, the police force for the first time since 70s, and a lot of citywide issues as well.
This is the most beautiful city in the United States. We're smart, we're passionate, we're innovative, we're tolerant. I love the fact that this community was the first in the country to support same-sex marriage by the people. I love the fact that we welcome all people from different perspectives. I love the fact, even so, welcoming to me at the door, including an occasional mirror and a wet towel earlier today, as a matter of fact. The compact between a citizen and his community is to give back at a point in life when you can take that time. I grew up at that point in my life, I've had a very varied career that I think uniquely prepares me for this position. I'd love to give back, I know that we can do better than we're doing. For such a vibrant community, the level of governance that we've enjoyed to date has not been reflective of our true nature, and I'd like to help change that. I moved to West Seattle 17 years ago from New York because I absolutely fell in love with this place. Eight years ago, my grandmother and my parents moved here from New York because they knew I was not going back. I've been married here, I have a three-year-old son here, and in all honesty, it's for him and the people of West Seattle that I want this position, that I'm running for council, because we have the unique opportunity to put in place a voice, a voice for our community, someone who's going to stand up for everyone that lives in West Park and South Park, I mean, in West Seattle and South Park, and do the right thing. There is so much potential in this city, there is so much wonder that's created by the companies and the people here that I don't see on a day-to-day basis when I look around Seattle. It's our schools, our transportation, our police, all of these things stand to be better. And I have been an entrepreneur, an attorney, and a teacher, and now I want to stand for all the people where I live, for West Seattle and South Park.
I told you a couple times that I was raised Arne Catholic, but I was also raised as the Grandard of the Greens, and I was also raised descendants of slaves in this country, and I was also raised in a soup kitchen from the age of five every other Saturday, with my hands right there being of service. We voted for districts because we understand that we need to respect the character of the communities that we've already built, and that we need to have someone that's going to be able to take us in the future for the communities that we want to continue to build. Half of the cities under 35, if we want those talented folks to feel welcome and to continue to build a city that you've already laid the groundwork for, we're going to have to send a translator in at some point. So, again, I just really very much appreciate being invited here this evening. This is the first district I ever volunteered in, the first district I co-opted in, this is the first time I've ever run it, and I very much appreciate your support.
I'll send everyone a big round of applause. Thank you.